Good evening all. Thank you and thank you for your patience. Welcome to regular meeting February 18, 2020. And it is 6:13. Roll call please. Here.
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 Thank you. Welcome Casey. We're happy to...Cassie, sorry. Cassie, we're happy to have you. Can you please lead us in the flag salute?
I do events to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which stands our nation and our God. In his soul with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have the inspirational comment. Trustee Garcia.
Thank you Madam President. Couple of weeks ago, I had an opportunity to go and tour a couple of schools on a Friday. Just to kind of see some of the work that has been done with Measure EE. And saw a lot of great work. Really inspiring as I was trying to think of some way to inspire the group here. And you know, not just seeing those students and their happy faces, the teachers, brand new schools. It had re-modernized like this past weekend, I...it was President's Day yesterday. And so I was going through some, just looking on the internet and stuff, trying to think of some inspirational quote. And I found one here that I'd like to read and share with you. And it kind of fits with that same theme of the progress that we've made here in Harupa over the past six years. If you're walking down the right path and you're willing to keep walking, eventually you'll make progress. President Barack Obama. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Garcia. Reports from closed session.
Thank you. By a five zero vote, the board voted to approve a settlement agreement in special education dispute regarding OAHK's case number 2019081067, resolving all issues in the dispute.
Thank you. Welcome student board members. Mr. Duchan.
Thank you, President Ortega. Well, Cassie, we'd like to welcome you. Well, I'll have you go last tonight. And if you'd like to introduce yourself, tell us a little bit about yourself. We would love to hear about you. We hope this is a valuable experience and just want you to know how important it is for the board, myself, and for us to keep a connection with our schools and to hear from you and what you have to say to us. So you will be asked for your preferential vote on several of the items, not personnel or discipline though. So we'll get to your report in a little bit, but thank you for being here. So with that, well, we'll start with the veterans here. How about Jasmine? Would you like to tell us about Rubito High School?
Good afternoon. I hope you all had a great day. My name is Jasmine Levan. I am the Rubito High School Board Representative. Not much has happened since my last school board meeting, but our winter sports are coming to an end. Our girls' basketball is still in season and they have made it to the quarterfinals. They play home tomorrow at 6:30. Our wrestling team ended their season with three boys qualifying for CIF and three girls qualifying as well for... Oh, three boys and nine girls for CIF. Our Frackin' Pride Day was a success. About 400 eighth graders came to our campus. Our spring sports have officially started today. Tennis had a home game and our track had a meet. Upcoming events that we have is the WASP visit. They will be in our school next Monday. We have a band concert February 27th in our staff versus student volleyball game February 28th. That's all I have for you today. Thank you.
Thank you, Miguel. Patriot High School.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Miguel from Patriot High School. And we have a lot of great events coming up. So first, on February 29th, we have our Future Warrior Saturday, which is a showcase for eighth graders. They get to come and ASB and Link Crew, we join forces and we create like teams for the eighth graders. And the students actually show the kids around campus and show our CTE off and other classes they can get involved with. And it's just a great, it's a great way for the kids to get extra acquainted with the school rather than just one Future Warrior Night where they come with their parents. They actually get to hear student, what's the word? Like student responses, I suppose. Then on March 3rd, we have our Future Warrior Night, which is where they come and meet our teachers. They learn about different programs. The parents get involved and really learn about our programs, meet a lot of the staff. They can have one-on-one talks with the counselors. And it's just a great way for everyone to get involved and really get acquainted before, you know, they start this next big chapter in their lives. We also have our senior rally underway. The theme is drum roll please. Decades, woo. So the senior class is in charge of this one along with the support of ASB. And hopefully, we can put together a truly amazing show. Every senior class before us has put together a great show. Last year, the seniors had a Greatest Showman one, which is about the Ringling Brothers and stuff like that. So hopefully, we put together something truly amazing. We also have our Club Food Week coming up after spring break, which is always a great time because food. And all the clubs are going to be vending. We're putting together a list for that right now. If any of the board members would like to come and support our clubs and really get to try a taste of what each, you know, club can offer. And that's all for my report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Miguel. And Cassie, you don't have to have any drum rolls, but you're welcome to. Welcome. We really appreciate you being here.
Hello, my name is Cassie. I am a student from Nueva Vista High School. Nueva Vista High School is very excited to participate on the JUSD Board. We have many exciting things going on our campus since the school began in August. So let me catch up. Our ASB has teamed up with Sunny Slope Elementary to promote reading. Every Wednesday, our 20 students leaders walk to the school and read T through K in kindergarten. We also help them paint with the beautiful new mural that is on the playground. We have so much fun visiting our literal dinos. We love doing community service at Nueva Vista High School. This year, we have been raising money for We Foundation, which helps us earn our tickets to We Day on May 8th. This is broadcast on ASB in August. Fun fact, Joe Jonas is a partner with We and Future Nueva on his Instagram. This year, our funds are going to support healthcare in Nicaragua. Our ASB has held two blood drives and will hold one more in May. We participated in the holiday food drive and just kicked off the Teen for Deans Drive today. We prepared speeches and spoke to each advisory class to encourage students to donate their used jeans. 1.5 million teens are homeless in America and jeans are most requested items from shelters. This past December, ASB participated in the Happiness Ringling Project. You may have seen us in our yellow shirts on the corner of Valley Way and Mission West signs that said, "You are enough, just breathe, you are loved, everything's going to be alright." In other words of encouragement. We also spread kindness on our campus this week by writing kind statements in chalk all over the school. Once a month, we have a Campus Wide Fun Friday. At lunch, the staff serves us food such as pizza, burgers, and hot cheetah bar. The students staff dress up for different spirit days like Meme Day, Sports Day, Pyjama Day, and Disney Day. ASB facilities games for fun and prizes, and we play music. Each quarter, students receive a newsletter called the Associated Aztec Press with articles that are written by their classmates. We include student spotlight, student art and poetry, and fun mazes and crossword puzzles. A new tradition that we started this year is pancaked with pride. Students nominated, students that are nominated are core values, which are positive attitude, respect, integrity, dependability, and efforts towards graduation. The teachers and staff members cooked up a delicious breakfast for the students and everyone was allowed to bring a family member or friend. Each student received movie tickets and other prizes were raffled off. We also recognize the students that exhibit pride in a weekly raffle called Aztec of the Week. This year, we are really excited to have logistics and supply chain operations as CTE class on campus. Miss Entenno's classroom was converted to Maka Warehouse over the summer. Some of our students were invited to the ribbon cutting ceremony at the Flying G, where they were presented with a donation to the CTE program. The Aztecs have had many awesome field trip opportunities. ASB attended the Unity Conference and some young women went to be your best selfie conference as well. Our Career Center has taken students on college tours to RCC, San Juan Queen Valley College, and is offering an upcoming trip to UTI on February 19th. Our Career Center also puts on an amazing college and career kickoff day. Amazing things are happening at Nueva. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to share them with you.
Thank you so much. We'll move to board member comments. We'll start with Trustee Regal.
Thank you. I really don't have much to share, but I definitely want to thank you for joining us. To all student members, but Cassie, thanks for joining in. And you were so lovely in sharing all that information and speaking on behalf of the board. I'm sure we really appreciate and love hearing what is happening on the schools. So a big welcome to you and thank you for joining us.
Thank you. We'll move on with Trustee Garcia.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of things. A couple of Saturdays ago, I was able to attend a census type of kickoff meeting right here at the Parent Center. And it was mostly hosted by a group there in the community called CCAEJ. But there were other people there, folks from other groups. Anyway, it was a really a great opportunity. We had a pretty good turnout. And so just want to remind everyone that census is coming up. And it's really important that we, that we're all accounted, especially for student services, for anything, any kind of government funding. And that's how they're going to redraw the lines and determine seats in Congress and even at the state level. So please get involved with the census. Make sure, tell all your neighbors, your family about the census. So, and those are some of the great programs that Harupa is able to host in our facilities here. And the last thing, I think, I had an opportunity to attend the Patriot High School Girls Soccer Game on Saturday. I don't remember if it was the second round or the next round's the second round. Anyway, they won, it was very exciting. They went into overtime and scored, you know, at the end. So they're going to play tomorrow. Unfortunately, I can't make it, but I just wanted to let my colleagues on the board know and anyone else who might want to go watch them tomorrow. Kickoff time is at 3:00 PM at the Patriot High School Field. So that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Chard.
I'd like to welcome Cassie to our board and thank the others, all of you for coming and showing up. I know it's hard when you're, especially if you're a senior, it's very hard to spend the time here. It's hard for us even with our families, but it's nice for you to come and give us that idea of what's going on at your school so that we can attend there and attend some of the functions. Since the last board meeting, hasn't been too much going on, but I did attend, Rubito High School had their Military Interview Day for the veterans. And they invite veterans from all over, relatives, teachers, staff, community members, to come and speak with the juniors at Rubito High School. And they do an interview in their history class. They have to interview them and then they have to write a report after that. Some of the teachers require it, some don't, some just suggest it's an extra credit thing. But this year, they had as many people as they had last year, and I saw several faces that were missing. There are several faces missing. And so I know that it's, if you're a veteran and you would like to help out with that, go down and tell your story. Sometimes the veterans just light up when they come in there and they talk to these kids. And I hope even though we're going to lose our ROTC at Rubito, that Mr. Robel, who's the teacher, history teacher of the history department, has started this last year. And I hope he continues with this program because it really, I think the kids enjoy it, but I think more so the veterans who get out, they come, some of them by a minivan. They come in if they're disabled, someone has offered to pick them up and bring them to these. And they love to tell their stories and they just sit there for an hour and a half telling their stories. Some of them bring suitcases of their medals and their awards. So it's really nice if you ever hear about that, go visit it because it's just to walk around and watch some of them. It's just a real joy and it's nice to honor our veterans that way. Also, I have, I'm on the DAC Committee and they'll have our first meeting, or second meeting, we had one earlier in the year. We'll have our first one for this new 2020 year. And that'll be on Thursday, so I'll report back on the next board meeting. This debate, the Date Festival in India is going on. And I don't know if we have any of our other departments going, but I know there are FFA programs from Harupa Valley and Rubito are both there. My granddaughter texted me yesterday that her pig weighed in at 200, so she made it. They have to weigh in at 200. And that's a struggle for some of the kids because they get the pigs when they're very young, maybe two, three months old. And they care for them for three or four months and sometimes they'll lose weight. Sometimes they'll gain weight way over. Last year, she had one that was 275, so this time she has one that just weighs 200. But they have to show what they're learning in FFA. And some of those things are that they have to learn how to take care of their pig and keep it groomed neatly. And then they have to show how they train it and how it behaves and does upon their commands and all that. So it's a lot of fun to go down and watch them and then they have to auction them off and that's a sad day. But they, they still feel proud when they take their animal out for the last time and show it off. And knowing that someone is looking at that animal for various reasons. Some of them will go for breed and some of them go to market. But it's a lot of fun. And then you get the joy of going to the India Date Festival and that's going on until the end of this week. I went to, when I went to Rubito on their Military Interview Day, I also went over to their library. They were having Cash for College Day. And they had several counselors down there and they were set, trying, they're in the Career Center. And they were trying to get, help the kids fill out their FAFSA forms. And if, if you've ever filled out a FAFSA form, it's very difficult. I mean, you have to gather a lot of information. And these counselors spend a lot of time trying to get the parents to come down with the kids and, and help them with their application. They don't have to necessarily go to the sessions, but they're going to have some more. So if you know a student that needs help filling out a FAFSA, make sure that they attend one of those sessions because they really can get the help from the counselors. And there's always scholarships at Career Center, they have scholarships. I'm on the Scholarship Committee here also, and we like to get as many applications as we can. We want everyone to have an opportunity. There are scholarships that people just don't apply for and we want them to, you know, really reach out. There's, there's a scholarship for just about everybody if you just look for it and the Career Centers can help you. And then coming up is going to be, on March 2nd, is going to be Read Across America throughout the district, I'm assuming. And Ms. Echols, I confirm, confirming that with you. I've been, we've been invited to some already. And it's, the community goes out and reads to the students and the students really like that. They really like hearing stories, even though they've heard the stories, Dr. Stu's stories over and over. They really do enjoy it and it kind of lights up their face to have someone else read that story to them. And then they have to, a lot of times the kids will come in, "I have that story at home and I read that all the time." So, and it's good to hear that our kids are reading. And then career days are coming up. I know a lot of the schools are having Career Day also. And if you get asked to go to one, it's, it really helps the students make a decision on what pathway they want to go. If they hear different people, it gives them an idea because there's a lot of things they don't know about. How, how a secretary runs an office or a superintendent or a board member, a salesperson or anything. And if you're any of those categories, the elementary schools are doing it, junior highs and the high schools are all doing it now in the spring. So if you get an opportunity to go or offer your profession to talk about, let the schools know that you'd like to do that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Bradford.
One of my friends has written at the top of his desk blotter, the words gratitude is an attitude. So I want to say thank you to people who don't often get thanked. And first would be the man behind the curtain over there, Vidas. Thanks, thanks for, I, you make it all run. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you to our deputy at the back of the room who keeps us safe and how much I appreciate our campus resource officers because two of my nephews were RSOs. And I know that not only do they keep the students safe, that they are confidants and sometimes surrogate parents to our students. So thank you to, to all those in law enforcement who help us. And all of you who come out on a Monday night when you could be staying home in your jammies and comfortable for whatever reason that you are here, thank you for being involved in our students' lives and letting us know that this is a priority to you because you want to be here and you feel you need to be here. Cassie, I'm absolutely delighted that you're here and I'm very happy to see Mrs. Sogstag with you. And, and thank you for, this is, this is our family and now I feel we're, we're complete. Miguel, I felt really proud of your school to hear the welcome of your future warriors. And especially that you're involving the parents. I was telling our, in closed session, that I had just happened to run into a fellow in uniform that said LA School Police. And so I started chatting with him and he talked about his truculent 16-year-old and what should this man do for, for the behavior. And the deputy said, "We should have had this discussion 10 years ago." So I think that students do better in school when their parents are involved. So thank you for, for making the effort to do that. And Jasmine, thank you for your leadership. You're a role model to your students and, and I love the kindness that you exude. And I, I think that Rubito is, well, all of our district is a better place for the positive attitude that you and Cassie talk about. And, and there are days that I would need to drive past your corner and, and see the signs that you put up. So those, those people, they're stuck in line, but I'm glad that you're there to help cheer them up. And thank you for being the role models and being here at night. Thank you again.
Thank you. And I would agree with you, Trustee Bradford. I once heard too that gratitude determines your altitude. So your altitude, yeah. So I think how you can go in life is determined by your gratitude. So I thank each and every one of you tonight for being here when you can't be doing something else. So we appreciate you all for, and also for having patience with us, coming in a little bit late to the board, to the board meeting. So first of all, thank you, students. You are our inspiration. We are all here because of you. So I just wanted you to know that. There's actually, here my board colleagues, there's two of us that graduated from the same school district, myself and Trustee Chard. So if you see yourself one day in leadership and want to contribute back to your community, especially in education, we all believe that, that you can do that. So I thank you for being here when you can also be doing homework or something else. So we appreciate you for being here. Two important events that we have coming up is CAPE, California Association by Linguistic Education. A chapter on the president for that chapter as well. And we're hosting the, our meeting here in, in the Parent Center. Thanks to Martha Gomez too for coordinating everything. We'll be having some entertainment and we'll be having some students, right? Some students that will be a dreamer, who are dreamers, who will be sharing their story, their inspirational story with us. So if you are around the area or would like to walk, to be there welcoming our students and the entertainment, it's going to be this Thursday at 6:00 PM in the Parent Center. So you are all welcome to join us. And this weekend, also I serve on the Board of the California Latino School Boards Association. We got a grant from Bill Gates and Melinda. And we, we saw the need for school boards like us that are, you know, a little bit smaller than, than a big, bigger, bigger school districts, that some school boards, some school board members don't get to do a lot of development for their districts or they get to see other districts do what they do. Something that we're very proud that we do here in Harupa is actually welcome students. Not a lot of school districts do that, so that's something that we're very, we encourage. So there's a lot of things that school, other school districts around California are not aware of. And so through this grant that we got, we are going out to very rural areas such as in the central area where a lot of, again, a lot of, a lot of school board members don't get access to other, to other of their peers. So we're going out there and we're doing a summit. We're hosting a summit there in Tulare County. And then the following weekend, we will be in Brawley, all close to the Mexicali border. So we're, because a lot, again, a lot of school boards, school board members of school districts can't come to these big events that sometimes CSBA or there's trainings, we're going to them through, again, the, thanks to, to the Bill Gates Foundation. And I'm the treasurer there. So it's very interesting how summits and conferences are run. And sometimes, you know, me as the financial person say, "We can't do that." But thanks again through the funding, we're able to make that, to make that possible for other school districts. And then in the springtime, we'll have other ones like in the LA and IE area here. And then the last one that we'll be hosting by the end of the year will be in Northern California. So again, reaching all, all school board members throughout the state. And I think that's it for right now. Thank you.
And we'll move on to public verbal comments. We have two cards. We'll welcome Jorge Monje.
Excuse me, Mr. Monje, is your microphone on? Sorry, I'm a little, a little hard of hearing here. Okay, there we go. Okay, so, sorry. First of all, I just want to say that we are really looking forward to a productive bargaining session. We have a three-year contract that's open at this time. And I think we can look forward to positive and productive negotiations because I believe we share many, if not most, of the same values from each side of the table. We share the belief that all students can achieve and that we need to strive to create the best educational environment for the students of this district. We also share the belief that it's important that we act as partners to create a district that will be able to attract and retain the best qualified teachers and educators for this district. And I believe that we're able to do that when we work very collaboratively and have honest and frank discussions about the conditions we're each experiencing and what are the best solutions to solve those things. I think we believe, we share the belief that teachers should be treated equitably, that when problems do emerge, that we solve those problems in a fair and reasonable way. And that we can build those positive relationships, we as the adults, and that we can then share that positivity down throughout all of our schools and to all of our students. So as I said, we look forward to the process. It will be interesting. I have been through this before and I think it is one of the most fascinating aspects of working with the school and working in tandem with both the district leadership and the association leadership. So thank you very much and we look forward to speaking again soon.
Thank you.
And I apologize if I butcher your name, Kath- Kathleen? Brany? Brany, okay. Thank you, no, sorry.
Good evening. First of all, I want to thank you guys all for the amazing work you guys do in the school district, first and foremost. Just sitting here and listening to all the other things that you guys are talking about and listening to these kids, it's inspiring. But I'm here to talk to you guys about Assembly Bill 2269 that you know has passed in the state of California that is encouraging the schools to educate the kids on the truth about behind labor unions. The fact that labor unions... a livable wage, affordable healthcare, and yes, pensions, they do exist. And we just simply want to educate these kids so that they can go home and empower their families and hopefully we can start seeing some movement here in this region. Again, our local, 1932 in San Bernardino, is going to be adopting a school every month to donate to. And I'd like for you guys to reach out to our local. We're committed to work with you guys to help. We know you guys can't do it alone, so we will be adopting a school every month and we're more than happy to come out and help with the educational piece. We have an amazing historian in Washington DC who was a retired school teacher and she's come up with some pretty amazing curriculum, so if you guys have any need for that. But just really want to hope that in the month of May, that these schools will start educating these kids on the truth behind labor movements, the importance of labor movements, and then again, like I said, empowering their families. That's all. I just, thank you for your time, I appreciate that very much.
Thank you very much.
And we stand with the teachers.
We'll move on to item four, administrative reports and written communication, report on language census. Mr. Dubrowski.
Thank you. Ms. Martha Gomez, Director of Language Services and Student Programs, I should say esteemed and fabulous Director of Language Services and Student Programs, will present to the Board a report on the language census, which includes the number of students who are English language learners and the various languages that are spoken by our students in the district.
Good evening, everybody. Yes, so I'm going to talk to you about our students, the number of students that we have here that are English learners. We do this report on an annual basis and we collect information about our students, who they are and the services that we provide and also who provides the services, the staff that provides the services. We had, the numbers are taken on October 2nd, the first Wednesday in October, so it could be October 2nd, October 3rd. So as of that day, we had 5,369 English learners and we had 5,176 students who are English proficient. So that means that they speak another language. When they came to us, they either spoke another language as well as English or they were reclassified. So we have over half of our population that speaks a second language at home. And we have over 24 languages in our district. Of course, Spanish is the largest. We reclassified 881 students last school year and the services that we provide are structured English immersion and also alternative course of study, which is where dual immersion fits in, and those are the required programs by the state. 811 teachers were providing services to English learners and we had 77 part professionals, bilingual tutors that work with our students. And that is it. Do you have any questions? You do.
First, I weep bitter tears that we have no Swedish speakers in the district.
We do not. That is one language that they would be able to select if they spoke Swedish.
The superintendent told me if he could find a teacher who was certificated in Swedish, that would make me happier.
Okay.
My real question is, what does reclassification mean?
When students register in the district, they have four questions that they answer. Is what language the students speak first, what language the parents speak, there's four languages, four questions. Anytime that they write a language other than English on the first three questions, it triggers an assessment to see if they are English learners or if they're fluent, proficient, that they don't need any extra services. If they are identified as English learners, then they have to go through a process of reclassification. They have to, the law right now says that they have to score a four on the LPAC assessment and then we have to look at academics, teachers' recommendations and, well, academics, teachers' recommendations and then they're reclassified if they are academically in, about the same level as English-only students. And so they're reclassified. So that's reclassification. When they're no longer identified as English learners, they are reclassified.
Is that considered a language?
It is not considered a second language. It's American Sign Language, so it is not considered that. So that wouldn't be part of this report. Yes, but that is not part of this report. They're not considered a second language learners. You're welcome.
Madam President, I got a question. Mrs. Gomez, thank you for this report, for all your hard work, especially with dual immersion. I think this year maybe is our first dual immersion graduation?
Yes, we have our first cohort.
So congratulations on your and your team for that. But the question I have is regarding, it says R30 Language Census Report, so does this have anything to do with the national census or is...
No.
How is this reported?
This is a report that we do on an annual basis, identifying who are the English learners, who are the students that are reclassified and it's collecting now through CalPads. All this information is collected annually and provided to the CDE.
Okay. And the CalPads, you mentioned CalPads, and maybe Mr. Dubrowski might know the answer to this. So for the census, for the US census, do they use information from CalPads or does it have to come through?
No, I believe they gather their own information and like you mentioned, the R30 is a census of languages in the state, but it's unique to our state.
Okay. So the funding for the district comes through CalPads, that information comes through CalPads?
The, well, CalPads is the information system that holds all the information, attendance information, demographic information, all that stuff. And so those pieces of funding, like concentration funds that are dependent on certain characteristics, they gather that information from CalPads.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Gomez.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Item B, accept initial negotiation proposal from NEA Harupa. Mr. Brooks.
The district has received the initial negotiations proposal from NEA Harupa for the 2020-2021 school year. It's recommended that the Board receive the proposal and withhold comment at this time. The proposal is being publicized tonight in order to permit the public to make comments in the verbal hearing session at the regular board meeting scheduled for March 9th, 2020. A copy of the proposal is included in the backup materials with the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Item C, announce initial district proposal for negotiations with NEA Harupa. Mr. Brooks.
Yes, the Board has reviewed in closed session the district's preliminary proposal for negotiations with NEA Harupa and this proposal is being publicized tonight at this time in order to permit public comments at the verbal hearing session at the regular board meeting again on March 9th, 2020. Copy of this proposal is also included in the backup materials with the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other administrative reports, written communication?
Actually, I just would like to make a comment about this very official R30 language census and talk a little bit about what's behind it. As Trustee Garcia mentioned, this is the first year of our dual immersion graduating class. That has been a long and wonderful program that wasn't very easy to start. I remember in the very early days when Mrs. Gomez started it and with two teachers, two kindergarten teachers. Now it's a large program in five schools, three elementary, one middle school and one high school. It's been recognized at the county and state level as an exemplary program, winner of a golden bell, and it truly is exemplary. But I would challenge anyone to find someone who has graduated from our school district who doesn't speak English fluently. The proof is in the pudding, as they say. Many of our top students go to fantastic colleges, but they came to our district not speaking English at all. And I think that says even more than the numbers, that the students who come not speaking English leave as fully competent in English as any language, fully competent to go to the best universities, fully competent to go into the workforce and to go to college. So I want to thank Mrs. Gomez and the teams that work with her and all of the teachers throughout the district, which is really all of our teachers who work with students who are English language learners irrespective of the language they come with, they leave with both. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we'll do adopted items. And I just wanted to double check, all of our student board members are still here. Can they, is this preliminary for them? No? So it would only be B and C? Can I call for a motion?
I move to approve the routine items.
I'll second that.
First by Trustee Bradford, second by Trustee Garcia. Any questions, comments? See none? Move. Call for vote, sorry. Item 31B, award bid number 192005TE, network equipment. Mrs. Ford.
Thank you. In January, administration solicited E-Rate Category 2 bids for network equipment. Specifically, this is for switches and battery backup systems. There were seven bids received and evaluated on February 4th. The evaluation criteria included price, completeness of the proposal, references, and fulfillment of the project's requirements, with price weighted the highest and the heaviest. One bid was deemed non-responsive. The equipment will be deployed to all school sites that have available E-Rate funding for the 2020-21 school year. Converge One was the lowest bidder at $854,736.41 and the purchase will be funded through the federal E-Rate program funds as well as special reserve for capital LA. Administration recommends the Board award the bid for network equipment to Converge One in the amount of $854,736.41.
Move to approve.
Second.
First was Trustee Regal, second, Trustee Garcia. And since student board members, you're all here, if you would like your preferential vote for this item? Good. That works.
You can say signify. Would you like to use the card?
Oh, yeah, we can actually, we'll call you guys and you'll say yes or no?
Jasmine, yeah? Oh. I'm like lost on what we're going to vote for because I like, I could just read award bid for network. Is it like to like, a motion to pass, like for the, is it like kind of where you have to, like, oh, I approve?
So your preferential vote is yes or no?
Yeah.
We would like to get your feedback. So if it's a yes or no and then we've, as a Board, then we vote, but we would like your input, so that's what that means.
Yes.
I say yes.
Any questions or comments?
Yeah, what are the, like, what's the award bid for network?
So this is for network equipment. So it's where, and we have to go out and bid that because it's over a certain dollar amount, so we're required to bid it and because it's our, the federal E-Rate program, which is, it's a program that pays school districts and libraries to be able to put networks in their buildings so that you can have Chromebooks and things like those kind of devices. So this is just, we went out and we bid that project and we are, bid that equipment and so this is just bringing that to the Board for approval.
So thank you for your feedback, guys. Now we'll go back to the Board. Any comments, questions?
I have a question.
Yep.
Is this renewed annually or is this something on long-term?
No, this is, we actually received funding through the federal E-Rate program for over, for a five-year period and this is the last of that funding that's available and so we're purchasing hardware to upgrade some of our older switches.
Oh, okay. And then when would this take effect?
This would be for, we would be deploying this out the 2021 school year.
Oh, wow. Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
I have a question, Madam President. Does the, is the E-Rate going to continue to be offered in a five-year period or are they changing that for next year?
Well, that's in the process right now, so we don't know for sure. So at this point, we don't know if there's going to be another round for a five-year period or if they'll change the program and make it something else.
We do assume...
But we do believe E-Rate will still be around.
Okay. Because that's a big benefit to, that really helps us in...
Absolutely, absolutely.
All right. Is that, is that based on the presidency? I mean, in other words, does it come out, or is this a separate entity and totally...
This is through the telecom companies and it's through the, it's the Universal Services Access, yeah. So it's called USAC and so it's a governmental agency.
I know we've had E-Rate for a long time, but I never knew where, it was always just...
You pay a little bit on your telecom bills for this program. So a little bit of that fee goes into this program for everybody. So as long as they're taking that fee, we still will get this program.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So we got first and second. Item C, Cas Ballard for 2020 CSBA Delegate Assembly Election. Mr. Duchon.
Thank you, President Ortega. You have a very difficult decision tonight because you get to choose six out of five candidates. So there were five candidates who were nominated to fill CSBA delegate seats, so you can vote for, you have many options, all, none, some, plus one. So generally, this is by consensus, but, so I don't know if you wish to add any members or just confirm the ballot.
I vote that we confirm the ballot as it is.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
So I move that we confirm the ballot as it is with the five members.
First by Trustee Garcia. First by Trustee Garcia, second by Trustee Chard. Any questions or comments?
Yes. If we vote on the way the ballot is, then we are assuming that if somebody does write one in and then gets enough votes, that person, we will have to take that person, right? By the other Boards, is that correct, true?
I don't know, I don't, maybe Mr. Garcia knows.
So, um, so basically, all the Boards are gonna vote, we're in Region 18.
Right.
So we'll all vote for the slate that's here, probably take the slate, but, um, so whoever gets the most votes is gonna be put on the Delegate Assembly, so, um, they've only got one write-in, so we should have our five no matter what.
Yeah, well, that's what I was saying, but if someone else puts a write-in in, and they all vote, then there will be six possibly.
There will be six, and we don't have to vote on it again.
And we don't, that is.
Right.
Yeah, it's just whoever votes, we will still vote on that.
Right.
Okay, that's, that's what I was asking. Thank you.
Any further questions, comments? No? And seeing one of our student board members is still here, can we get your preferential vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
Go, Cassie, go, Cassie.
Okay, we'll move to, we'll move to the call out, um, sorry, we'll move to the, oh. Passes five zero. And last item on our agenda is Board Member Committee Reports, and we'll start with Trustee Bradford.
My committees haven't met. I've been invited to some cool stuff, however, the NEAJ Site Reps Council, thank you, and being, reading at Read Across America at Ina Arbuckle, and presenting on Career Day at one of the other elementary schools. And it's, you know, this is the payback for, for sitting up here and putting on makeup on Monday nights twice a month, is getting to go be with the children and see, this is why we do all this stuff. And, and thank you again to our teachers and our staff.
Thank you. Trustee Chard.
I don't have anything to report, since I reported it before, but I do want to mention that I'd like to thank Mr. Bynum for coming. He attends every meeting, I think, ever since I've been on the Board, he has not missed a meeting, and he said of our, our, um, our food, he feeds our kids, makes sure that they get nutritious foods and takes care of all that, and keeps it running smoothly with his staff, so I want to thank him, because he does come every night, and we hardly ever talk about food for you, so, but you're here to know what's going on. Thank you so much, Ms. Echols also, and John from CSEA. All of you people, we really appreciate you coming out, or we could just be sitting up here talking to each other. Thank you. Have a good week. See you on March 9th.
Thank you. Trustee Garcia.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of comments. Ms. Chard, I just wanted to mention, she forgot to mention that when she does a Read Across America, that she dresses up as Dr. Seuss.
The Cat in the Hat.
Cat in the Hat.
Not Dr. Seuss.
Well, Dr. Seuss is Cat in the Hat.
No, no.
Okay, all right, all right. Dr. Seuss is Cat in the Hat, so it's really neat to see, so.
Thank you.
And just congratulate Ms. Ortega, President Ortega, with respect to the Bill, Bill and Melinda Gates, I think that's pretty awesome, I saw, I think I saw that earlier sometime, and thanks for all the great work that you're doing with both CAVE and California Latino School Board Association. And don't forget, Election Day is coming up, so, March the 3rd, so make sure you get out and vote. If you don't vote, I mean, you know, your vote's not, you're, you're not counted, it's like the census, so, um, so make it count.
Several educational funds on second page.
And there's a lot, there's a lot of education stuff on there, there's Prop 13, it's very important. I'm not telling you how to vote, but go out and look at it. If you want to know, give me a call, and how important it is. And also, Measure A for RCC is another one I think you should take a look at. Measure A is right here in Harupa, Harupa Area Recreation and Parks District, is another important assessment to improve our parks. And then Measure E, which is our, our bond here in Harupa, and if you want more information on that one, you can go to yesoneeforstudents.org, and you can call me too, and I can explain it to you and tell you all about it. And so, but don't forget to get out and vote.
That's right.
And that's all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Regal.
Thank you. President Ortega, yes, congratulations on working on those and bringing those rural areas or going to them to give them that opportunity of other districts and, and just building that commodity is really important, so thank you for putting all that effort and time in. I don't have any committee reports, I know that there's gonna be some notice of dates coming, but I have not seen any yet, so as soon as I hear, I'll be sharing the news.
Thank you. I don't have any other reports either, but just again, congratulations, Casey, we're extremely happy to, to have you, and you do complete the family of, of our high schools, and look at you, what a, what a leader already. You did the flag salute for us, and then you got preferential votes too, so thank you, it means a lot. We don't get to do a lot of events, but when we do is because a lot of the, the information we obtained from you students, so thank you, and thank you to, to your school site too that's here to support you, that shows a lot of, of, of support and respect, so, uh, thank you, thank you again, everybody, for, for being here and for joining us. And any final comments, Mr. Duchon?
No. Good evening to all.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.